Good evening, everyone. We will call this commission meeting on October ninth, two thousand and twenty-five to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Grunder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Bloodsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Howell.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
If you'll stand with me, our invocation will be given tonight by Vice Mayor Miller.
Father, we come to you as humble as we know how, God, just saying thank you for another day. Thank you for this beautiful day that you blessed us with. Father God, on tonight, we ask that you would lead, God, and direct us, give us wisdom, and let us be at peace with every decision made on tonight. In Jesus' name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion if we approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of consent agenda from the minutes of the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five commission meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Move on to special presentation, presentation of the High Springs hero.
Mr. Mayor, it is my honor to do this again this week. This week, we are honoring active employees that work for the city of High Springs that have previously served our country. I see one in here at least. I've got a list that Angela put together for me. Some folks gave us a little bit of information, others just told us what branch they were in. So we've got twelve employees, which is about thirteen percent of our workforce that have served our country, and what a blessing they are to us. First is Nick Whitman. He was in the Army, was airborne infantry. He joined the Army in two thousand and two out of high school, attended basic training and airborne school at Fort Benning, Georgia. He was assigned to Delta Company of the First Battalion, five hundred and fifth Parachute Infantry Regiment in Fort Bragg, North Carolina. He was deployed in Fallujah, Iraq, Iraq, in two thousand and three to two thousand and four, where he earned his Combat Infantryman's Badge due to numerous sustained engagements with enemy personnel to include IED bombings, ambushes, and raids to capture insurgents. He was honorably discharged from the Army in two thousand and five. Officer Patrick Treese, served in the United States Coast Guard Reserve from two thousand and seven to two thousand and twelve as a Maritime Enforcement Specialist, Second Class, doing maritime law enforcement. Sergeant Vernon Higginbotham, Florida Army National Guard, from the third of January nineteen seventy-nine to the third of January nineteen eighty-five. He was a specialist for track vehicle crewmen, tanks, armored personnel carriers, and he was honorably discharged and received the Florida Meritorious Service Medal. Anthony Pacala, he's not here, but he's probably work-in-chief, I would imagine. He was in the United States Army. I attended his retirement party not too long ago. Drew Wilson was also in the United States Army and I believe still serves as a reserve in the Army. Kendrick Hampton was in the Air Force. Andy Burkhalter was in the Navy. Jamie Skinner was in the Marines. Brian Langston was in the Army. Chief Joe Peters was in the Army. George Tatum was in the Army. And Mr. Jeremy Marshall, who's not here tonight, I know started off in the Marines and received Purple Heart Award after he was blown up in Afghanistan. So we can't thank you all enough for your service, and we are so grateful that you continue to serve us and our city. So thank you all so much. I don't know if either of you would be willing to come up and tell us more, Chief Peters, if you wanted to expand a little bit.
I served from nineteen eighty-nine to nineteen ninety-six. I was in the U.S. Army Field Artillery, and I was honorably discharged in ninety-six. So didn't really see much combat in my time because I was more Cold War era, although Operation Iraqi Freedom happened, or Desert Storm happened during my time. But we served this on this side, state side, when it came to that. So other than that, Fort Sill, Oklahoma is a place. Let's put it that way. So that was where I did most of my time. It was Fort Sill, Oklahoma. So.
Chief, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Tatum? Any, any? No? Okay. Thank you. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your time in the military?
Yeah, I joined out of high school. My eighteenth birthday was very memorable. That was the day I went into the gas chamber in basic training. So it was a happy birthday to me. Two days after my nineteenth birthday, I went to Iraq. I was the youngest person in the company there. So did nine months, flew into Baghdad, did operations out of Baghdad in Fallujah, and then some people may have heard about the Battle of Fallujah. So that happened with the Marine Corps, so right after we left is when that happened. They had killed some contractors and stuff, and so the Marines went in there. So that was, but yeah, we convoyed out to Kuwait and flew out, and that flight was probably the best feeling of my life. So, but yeah, very happy to have served. Was young and didn't know any better, so it was easy. But yeah, happy to do it, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service. Yeah, would y'all like to take a picture?
Mr. Mayor, he is a Miami fan. I just wanted to.
You know, my mom always said, not everybody can be perfect. Yeah, that's, that might should be the first question on the application. Can you root for a good team in Miami now? I guess not. I guess not.
No.
Okay. Let's do it. I like it. They get us when we down, and we gotta hear about it. Good Lord. All right, we will, no unfinished business. And we will move on to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record. Limit comments to five minutes.
Good evening. Julie Tapia, Your Honor. An issue has been recently in the news is our, it's been signed into law, and I want to get the commission's perspective and reaction as it might affect our planning and development codes. It's SB one eighty, now signed in as two thousand and twenty-five dash one ninety, state of Florida. It's the one that prohibits municipalities from adopting stricter ordinances after a hurricane for a period of time, or from increasing impact fees or permitting fees for a certain number of time in the designated disaster zones within a hundred miles or a hundred and eighty miles. Some of the municipalities, Alachua County and Alachua City, are joining lawsuit challenges that are contesting that this perhaps impedes on home rule for our land and planning ordinances. And since we are in the middle of revamping our planning and land codes, I wanted to know how this is going to affect our city, what the city would think of maybe joining this lawsuit if they thought it was constitutionally inappropriate. The other cities are putting up fifteen thousand dollars, I believe, to enter with the class action. That money could come from the city manager's contingency fund if that was appropriate. My opinion, it seems to look like it might benefit builders more or developers in a time where the city is trying to help citizens rebuild individually. But maybe a builder would come in on these discounted impact rates or discounted permit fees and try to, you know, push a larger neighborhood all at once. I want the opinion of the commission. How is this going to affect us? If it is even, you know, constitutionally appropriate, or maybe from our city attorney can input on that? And if that is something we need to address as we do our planning board amendments. Second issue, for a topic for future input, has any of our commission ever been asked to be a part of an opioid task force or drug awareness presentation? If there was one created, would you be willing to get more involved or more info out to our students at our schools to make kids aware of the dangers and realities? And would you be willing to vote for funds for such a cause? Perhaps some of our sitting SROs and police officers can give us input as to what they experienced on the street side of the opioid and fentanyl crisis. Many of my family members work in healthcare, from anywhere from PAs to pharmacists to anesthesiologists. We also have a pharmacist. We have many in my family who see the other side of the opioid crisis on the inside of the hospital that our first responders bring to them from the streets. Is opioid awareness task force something that you would want to put, that the city would want to pursue and implement, and if so, would you vote for such a program? Thank you.
David Lynch. I urge the city manager and the commissioners to think about our beautiful concrete streets. I beg the city manager and the commissioner not to pave over these streets. High Springs Brewing. Do the commissioners want the name of their city associated with a product that kills seven thousand people each day? A few years back, Jason Kittle was working in my backyard with some other men, working on the sewer. He was at the Director of Public Works at that time. I think he was in some supervisory capacity. And he wanted to smoke a cigarette. And he asked my permission to smoke a cigarette in my backyard. So this man has class. You're lucky to have this man working for you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, and I think we agree.
Good evening. Jonathan Ramsey. I'm actually one of your Alachua County judges. I actually have a civil docket here in Alachua County, although we are currently a judge down, and so I'm doing a lot of criminal work as well. I've kind of been making the rounds to all the commission meetings. I feel like I just follow Folds Walkers firm around and whatever municipality they currently are that night. But I'm kind of getting around for a couple of reasons is, you know, I think in these days, a lot of angst and frustration among a lot of people and a lot of the branches of government. And the judiciary is not immune to that. We're seeing a lot more frustration, a lot more issues, a lot more people having just frustration with us. And I think part of that is because you guys don't know us. And so that's part of what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get out here and meet everybody, get you to know me as just a person, not somebody who's just sitting off in a robe that you feel, you know, awkward and uncomfortable to come talk to. So I want you guys to get a chance to kind of get to know me, get to know the Alachua County judiciary, tell us what we're doing wrong. Obviously, see the chief sometimes in Zoom hearings and stuff like that. But get to know us outside of that, because obviously, we have blind spots. Obviously, we probably have our own unique biases and stuff like that that we're not even aware of, but people don't feel comfortable enough to tell us. So trying to come to these meetings, get to know, get to know all the citizens. Hopefully, you guys talk to me and let me know what your thoughts are, what ways you think the judiciary can improve. I also want to let you guys get to know me as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Bisher, High Springs. Nice to see you all again, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, staff, and attorney. I was here a little over a year ago and brought something to your attention called the Cross County Fracture, which connects Mill Creek Sink to water on the north side of High Springs. And the commission took some action and actually stated that they were an affected party with relation to the Tara Developments in the city of Alachua. And I applaud the commission here for doing that because this development can directly impact not only the city of High Springs, but also the Santa Fe River and Hornsby Spring. So Julie brought up SB one eighty, and another interesting aspect of SB one eighty is it allows administrative approvals of final plat maps. And that's where Tara Forest West is right now. Construction plans have been submitted to the city of Alachua, and it's, the developer is pushing for an administrative approval of that. Why is this important now? Well, the National Speliological Society, which also is an affected party, they own the property where Mill Creek Sink is located. And in August, so nearly two months ago, they submitted a letter to the city of Alachua and stated that the approvals for the special exception permit by the Planning and Zoning Board are void. And they're void because of improper or a delinquent notice online. And so the details are in this letter in terms of that aspect. And why, why is this important? You're probably asking at this point. It's like, well, the folks weighing in on this, now the city of Alachua has hired Walker Folds as their attorney. Actually, the city of Alachua didn't, the interim city manager hired Walker Folds, so the commission cannot actually fire Walker. The city of Alachua, that is. And so there's a conflict that's occurring because the Walker Folds is representing both you, they signed the letter as an affected party, and the city of Alachua. And that's a problem. And that's a problem of Florida statute. I believe it's four dash seven point one. That is an issue because I don't believe that you all have been informed of this potential conflict. And I shouldn't say potential conflict because it is a conflict. You know, their firm is representing you, signed the letter. They're also representing the city of Alachua, and should it become contested, then you're both represented by the same firm. So I feel like the city commission here of High Springs should put the city of Alachua on notice that Walker Folds should not be allowed to weigh in on the Tara Developments. Okay? This, this letter is complex, and it's complex in this way. The city of Alachua is going to say that, that the statute has run based on a writ certiorari. And that was thirty days. But what's happened is because this wasn't properly noticed online, which actually violates Florida statute that was effective in January two thousand and twenty-three, because it impacts that on, because of that, it's void, and it's subject to declaratory judgment, which has four-year statute of limitation. So this was approved last year in June by the Planning and Zoning Board for the city of Alachua. So I encourage the city of High Springs to take this matter and bring it to the attorney, right? But also go on the record and say that they shouldn't be representing the city of Alachua. You guys were first at the table. You had them for several years, right, as your representation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Appleby, High Springs Parks and Rec Director. Just a couple announcements I want to make you all aware of. This Saturday, October eleventh, from nine to four at the High Springs Sports Complex, we'd love for you guys to join us and any of the citizens in the surrounding area for our first annual Pinktober co-ed softball tournament in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We are, it is hosted in partnership with Blossoming Butterfly, a nonprofit organization assisting current and recently diagnosed breast, ovarian, and uterine cancer patients. Blossoming Butterfly offers financial relief, housing, and utility assistance for those in active treatment, wellness and recovery services, emotional and community support. You can visit their website at blossomingbutterflyinc.org, and it's going to be a fun round robin tournament with all the proceeds and donations benefiting Blossoming Butterfly. Out there with us will be three five-two munchies, serving up all your favorite treats from ten to two P.M., and we'd love for you guys to come out there. And if you have anybody in your family or friends that are affected by this awful diagnosis, we'll have resources out there for you and information how they can be supported. And then on Tuesday, October fourteenth, at the High Springs Civic Center at five P.M., our tree advisory board will be meeting where we're going to be planning future tree plantings in key parks and areas of the city, followed by our Parks and Rec Advisory Meeting, where we're going to have a special slideshow presentation and discussion of a possible CSX Rails to Trails project. So we have some information on that, and we invite everybody out to come see that with us. Again, October fourteenth at the Civic Center, starting at five P.M. And then taking off my city hat and putting on my High Springs Playhouse hat, I'm the director of Wait Until Dark, which is currently showing at the High Springs Playhouse weekends in October, Friday and Saturdays at seven thirty, and Sundays at two P.M. And this, we have a visually impaired heroine, which is part of the story. It's a thrilling show, and we encourage you to support live local theater. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any commissioner comments? Like to respond to anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to respond to Mr. Bisher's comment because I did ask at a previous meeting about that potential conflict and was told that we would be okay with it as it is, but that if it got pushed, then it would be up to the city of Alachua to find alternate representation.
There is conflict counsel, and David Theriac will be handling the, the land planning for Alachua in the event that there is a conflict between the interests of High Springs and Alachua in that matter.
So they've already identified a different attorney that's under contract with the city of Alachua?
Alachua does have a separate attorney, David Theriac, who handles a lot of their land planning and land use issues, and so he will be handling any, any potential conflicts that arise in that area.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sir. Any other commissioner comments?
I got a, a letter about public indecency. Did we ever get a hold of that situation?
Yes, we did. That's been referred to the state attorney's office.
Okay. And then my only question. And then my only question I have, Rails-to-Trail, isn't that a CRA project? Is it now Parks and Recs? Okay.
How about what Ms. Julie just brought up about the LDC, about people coming in here? And do you have any comments or anything to add with that?
Yeah, so it is true that there is a class-action-esque lawsuit that's being brought by several municipalities in reference to SB 180. Essentially, what SB 180 does is a couple of things. It requires, instead of board or commission approval of certain items like replating and other such items, that you have administrative approvals, so that you cannot require someone go in front of a board. It has to be done administratively for several items. And then, as was mentioned, it also restricts you from adopting more restrictive LDRs in certain areas. And I can give a presentation that's a little bit more specific on exactly what it is. It's a little bit hard to parse out. But yes, there are a lot of municipalities that are sort of ringing the bell of this is something that they believe does violate home rule. I'm not sure what the buy-in on that is. I can get that information if that's something that the commission is interested in. But it certainly will be something that we have to take a look at as we get our land development code reviewed. We will need to make sure that we are looking at the way that SB 180 would impact our ability to adopt any of the recommended changes by our consultant.
Yeah, I would hate, after a hurricane, that we're trying to deal with our citizens, and then we have something slip in underneath us without us having any control over. That kind of leaves us open for any kind of wrongdoing, if you want to call it that. But we wouldn't have any control over some of that stuff, right? That was basically what it would amount to.
It essentially prohibits you from addressing in that time what you would generally address, being able to put more restrictions, to assist in these. Often, what you see after hurricanes is more restrictive LDRs in order to sort of provide for safety of people's homes and that kind of thing. And so that is explicitly what is prohibited by SB 180. So it doesn't take away what you already have, but it prohibits you from putting in anything that's more restrictive.
Then what's the point of us updating our LDR if we can't do what we think is best for High Springs? If we wanted to say, you know, R1 can only be an acre, R2 can only be a half acre, R3 is a quarter of an acre, and that's all that's allowed, we're not going to be able to do that?
Yeah, so it'll be dependent upon what exact change we're trying to make. But there will be changes, that if the changes, you know, you were allowed to build within X feet of such-and-such water feature, and now you're only able to build within, you know, a smaller amount of feet, that would probably be something that would be prohibited by SB 180. So there are some things that you can still change about your LDRs. It doesn't say that you can never change anything ever, but it says that, you know, you can't make certain things more restrictive.
So is that only for the year after a hurricane comes through, or is that...
So it's for three years. So essentially, for Florida, it's forever.
Basically forever.
Oh, my goodness.
Better get her stuff in now.
And who's bringing this forth? Not the state of Florida, hopefully.
It's already passed.
Yeah, it's a state of Florida legislation, yes.
Wow.
In Section 18, it mentions, and again, I haven't been able to read this whole thing this amount of time, but it says a year after a hurricane makes landfall. So that's three years for, as used in this section, the term impacted local government means a county listed in the disaster area within 100 miles of the track of the storm.
Yeah, so there's two parts of it. It's three years from adoption, and then there's a year after a hurricane. So three years that we're in right now.
From June.
And then year after adoption moving forward, or year after hurricane moving forward.
So if that was the, if we, roughly four years, if we had a hurricane in three years, we couldn't make any changes for four years?
And if you had a hurricane after that, then you wouldn't be able to make any more restrictive changes? Again, it's not any changes. And Danielle and I are working to put together, because obviously, it will shock no one, that SB 180 is probably unnecessarily wordy and complicated. So we're trying to sort of pare it down to its nuts and bolts.
Mr. Mayor, to answer the opioid task force question, we are part of the opioid task force, right?
We are. In fact, I was going to address that, yeah. I'm actually on the opioid, I'm actually the member on the opioid task force. And as far as going out, I've done numerous things at schools and whatnot, representing both the city and the city of Gainesville as well. And talked to most of the high school students at Santa Fe High School. I've been brought in pretty much every year to give a presentation to all the kids about drugs and then what actually happens whenever the fentanyl gets mixed in and whatnot. And so they like seeing all my pictures. They like seeing all the drugs we've gotten. We also are live with our, I was going to save this for the end, but I'm glad you brought it up. We're actually live with our opioid task force now. We have commercials out. We've got billboards going up in Gainesville. There'll be some, once we get all the stuff, I'm going to have it out and get a link on our website that'll take people there for resources and whatnot that we're a part of. And luckily, it all came without having to pay a dollar. A private group came in, paid everybody's $10,000 entry fee. So the city of High Springs never had to pay that money, which was good. And it's live now. It's rolling. So you should start hearing something from it, and a lot of resources available to help people that maybe their kids get on something, and unfortunately, they need some therapy, some counseling, maybe some rehab. So all those things are available now. I was actually going to get to that at the end, but I guess we can go right into this. We had a very, very nice email sent to us as Commissioners, and it says, "Dear Public Works Director, I am writing to extend my deepest gratitude and recognition for the outstanding effort, professionalism, and dedication shown by the High Springs Public Works Department during an incident at my home last night. At approximately 10:00 p.m., a tree fell across the street and into our backyard, or into our yard, taking down a power line, blocking the road, and even ripping a transformer off the pole, which ultimately crushed our water line. Within less than 30 minutes of my after-hours call, the first member of Public Works was already on site. While the fire department and police department did an excellent job securing the roads on both sides and keeping traffic clear and safe, it was the Public Works crew who rolled up their sleeves and worked tirelessly through the night. They dug to locate the damaged line, repaired the water leak, and coordinated seamlessly with Duke Energy as crews restored the power and replaced the transformer. Their efforts continued until around 3:00 a.m., and through it all, they remained incredibly friendly, positive, and professional. This morning, I awoke to see the same crew back again, cleaning up the debris and restoring order to the neighborhood. The pride they take in their work is evident, and their service is invaluable. These men may not always get the same spotlight as first responders, but they are heroes in their own right. They provide us the daily luxury of never having to worry about utilities, and for that, we are truly blessed. The city of High Springs is fortunate to have such an exceptional public works team. Please share with them how much their service is appreciated, not just by my family, but the entire community. These men may not wear capes, but they are heroes of the city of High Springs and deserve recognition. With sincere gratitude to Oliver Family." That is, you know, that's the best part of being a Commissioner, is we get all those emails, and we actually get a bunch of them. Our staff is what I would call second to none. We have some of the best people working for us, and we are very fortunate. And that's just another example, so. Jason, please let them know. And, you know, we can't thank them enough. I always tell people, people love the cops, but when you go home and you can't flush your toilet or turn on the lights, we're not that important all of a sudden? So I really appreciate them. Who was it, Jason? Can we get them a shout-out?
There's a bunch, about five of them. We got Hunter Lindsey, Joseph Howell.
Hunter Lindsey, Joseph Howell, Mac Brown, Wyatt, and Gary Wagner.
I'm sure you were there somewhere, too.
No, I was sleeping.
Even better. Well, thank you to them. Thank you for representing us in such a positive way. We'll move on to new business. New business item one, discuss, consider, and act on complaint to foreclose on lien.
So I'll take this. You have a bunch of materials in your packet regarding this item, but essentially, what it boils down to is, we have a lien on the subject property as part of this lawsuit for about $2,000. We've recorded our lien. It sits on the property. The mortgage holder on that same property has now filed an action to foreclose on their mortgage. Their mortgage is primary to our lien, so it comes first in the order of what gets satisfied from a foreclosure sale. The mortgage is about $110,000, $111,000 that's being foreclosed on. We do anticipate that there will be sufficient monies to also satisfy our $2,000 lien. Really, what we're looking for at this time, I don't think that it will cost us any money to begin this process. What we would like to do, Danielle and I, is contact the mortgage company and see if we can just sort of agree to get all of our liens foreclosed in the same process, sort of amicably. That way, we're not really spending a bunch of money and potentially getting some money, about $2,000 from that foreclosure sale once it goes through. So if that sounds all right to you all, just sort of head nod consensus that that's how we want to move forward. And if it starts to cost any money, we'll obviously come back and let you know. All right. Thank you.
Perfect. That's all we had to do on that. That was easy. Moving on to new business item two, discuss, consider, and act on resolution number 2025-R.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, this is resolution number 2025-R, resolution of the city of High Springs, Florida approving that certain agreement between the city and the Gapski law firm, PA, for special magistrate services, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. This is exactly what it sounds like. This is a resolution to approve the special magistrate contract, which is essentially the same contract that you've had with your previous special magistrate. All the same good things that we had in the previous one, like termination for convenience clause, are in there. Happy to answer any questions, but we were able to get this together for your review today, so we can have a special magistrate once again employed.
And I think for the citizens, the important thing is the last one that we went with was just costing us too much money. We were understanding that it was going to be one way, and it kind of became a different way, and so we moved on from them. And we're going to contract now with another person who had put in that should be a little cheaper for us, so that we don't spend all of our money on it.
Chief Shepard, this was the one you recommended us go with in the beginning, wasn't it?
I'd like to recommend with also code enforcement.
Okay, thank you.
Any Commissioner comments on it, or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I just appreciate that this firm was willing to step back in to the mix. This is a really good example of how sometimes you don't know the right questions to ask until after the fact, like with the solid waste contract.
Absolutely.
We didn't know a lot of the right questions to ask. So I'd like to offer my apologies to staff for not taking your recommendation, and we should have. So, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the new contract with Gapski Law Firm.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any public comment? Okay.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Moving on to new business item three, discuss, consider, and act on agreement to piggyback contract for continued consulting services with GAI.
And we have a resolution for this as well. This is resolution number 2025-S, a resolution of the city of High Springs, Florida approving that certain piggyback agreement between the city and GAI Consultants Incorporated for continuing consulting services, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to said agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict, and providing an effective date. As your synopsis page lets you know, we already have worked with GAI in the past for professional consulting services, planning services more specifically is how we've worked with them in the past, and we are now piggybacking off of Palm Bay's contract with them, which is essentially the same as the previous contract that we had with GAI, their standard operating contract.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is for Amy. We're looking at CRA using this specifically?
We use and ask for the whole session.
Right. Well, I went to some of their sessions where they were asking residents questions when they were working on the Parks Master Plan, and they did a phenomenal job. The questions they were asking, the interaction was so professional. It took a long time to get the Parks and Rec Master Plan, but I think part of that is our issue. We had some staff turnover. The only thing I would like to see, to make sure we have, is set timelines for deliverables, you know, so that they're not holding you up. And not, they necessarily would, but they did do a phenomenal job with the Parks and Rec, with the Parks Master Plan, so.
Any other comments, questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the piggyback contract with GAI.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any citizen comments? Now, Angela, it says, on the document, it says, "Resolution." Do we need to do a resolution? Okay.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes. All right, moving on to city attorney report and update.
Other than what I have already provided tonight, I was planning to give a synopsis of 180, sort of came a little bit early, but you should be seeing a bit more in-depth presentation on that soon. That's all from me.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. City manager report and update?
I don't have anything for tonight.
Love you for that. Commissioner comments and concerns?
I've got nothing for tonight.
Same here.
I promise, Commissioner Howell, I'll be quick. I know you've got to get on the road. I did want to bring up that I had received an email from Kathy Greiner. She came to a meeting a while ago about issues with her trash pickup, and that location was a mile from her house. Waste Management did reach out to her, Waste Pro, to try to find a workaround and a solution. And it appears from her email that it's not working. And I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. She's reached out to Waste Pro for some resolution, so I'm not sure how we address that. It's a mile from her house, and they can't get down the road because it's too narrow and it's, you know. So maybe moving forward, as we're talking about the solid waste contract, maybe it would make sense for us to give some carve-out opportunities, and this might be a question for Kirsten, for residents, if there is kind of a situation like that where it's a mile away. I don't know if you've heard anything from them or not, Jason, in terms of...
I know Mike's talked a little bit to them.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I just wanted to bring that up to you guys, that she'd reached back out to me. And I want to wish a good luck to all of the local Alachua County marching bands. There's four of them going to Fleming Island this weekend, Buaholtz, GHS, Santa Fe, and Newberry. For all of those but Buaholtz, it's their first competition, so I expect that we're going to be very well represented. And you guys are probably going to regret putting me on that water climate board. I've got a little bit of feedback. We had a meeting on Monday, very, very interesting. They were talking about, there's so many acronyms, but the Santa Fe River Basin and the outstanding springs that we have in that basin. There are six of them in that basin, and it used to be we had three of those springs that were considered impaired. Now, five of the six of them are impaired. That's Devil's Complex, Hornsby, Itchitucknee Group, Columbia, and Tree House. The only one that is not impacted at this time is Poe.
Wow.
So it's a pretty big deal. There's all kinds of buzzwords, you know, BMAP, Basin Management Action Plans, minimum flows and levels. The levels of the river has been down for a long time, and we're not getting it back. And we've got all of these consumptive use permits that are issued that pull water out. And we've got all of these consumptive use permits that are issued that pull water out. And what I learned on Monday, and I, at, with your agreement, gentlemen, I'd like to invite, um, Stacy Greco, perhaps to come and give us a presentation, because she's so much smarter about this stuff. It appears that D E P is in the pre-planning stages of, ah, to, to restore minimum flows and levels in the Santa Fe, Santa Fe River. They're considering discharging all of the city of Jacksonville's treated wastewater into the Santa Fe River Basin, which is, is, is a little outside the box thinking. I gotta grant them that, but it, it, um, kept me up at night. So I'd love for her to come and talk to us if you guys would be willing, just because all of these little acronyms, most of us, regular people, don't understand what they're talking about. But it could have a really big impact here. It could get our flows up, but if you think about what's in domestic wastewater, oh, the cost is billions.
Yeah, but at what cost to our environment?
That, that's the problem. You know, we look at nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium because of all of the fertilizer runoff, and that's definitely a big part of our problem. But if you think about domestic wastewater, think about all the pharmaceuticals that are going in the, in the, in the stream. How, how much oral contraception is there? How could that impact the ability for our fish to reproduce? So that's actually something you can test for, and I asked about that at the meeting. Um, you know, it may not kill the fish, but it may make them sterile. And so then what, then what's gonna happen? It's kind of a slow kill. So I would love, if you guys would, would be okay with me reaching out to Stacy, because I'd love for her to educate us. Thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right. I, uh, I miss, uh, the employee of the week this week comes from the fire department, Mr. Doug Hope. He did a video with the principal at High Springs Community School. Um, I had a question about the final market. Did we ever get the E B T situation fixed?
So, yeah, it was just a clerical error. All the paperwork has been submitted. I spoke with Bobby Lyons. He's the head of it and, um, he's in California, so there was a little time difference when I was talking with him. But, yeah, we're, we're on track. We haven't ever lost the designation. We're still active and able to take SNAP. It's just that renewal, it comes every two to four years. And once we're, we're good, we'll be good for a little bit. It's just two of the, she, she was thinking when she filled it out, because it said if you're a municipality or, you know, a government, you didn't have to fill out the next few, but there was an eleven before that and a thirteen after. So that's been resolved and mailed off to them, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, do we have any updates on the priest theater? Because me being the chair, me being honest with everybody, um, nobody contacts me about anything about the priests. And I am the chair of the priest board, but nobody ever calls me.
I, I don't think there have been any updates on that, but I can get you some updates, absolutely. We can loop you in.
All right. With all the new homes in the Douglas community, I got asked, um, do we have impact fees for just that area? Because the round, the circle around Patricia Gardens, the roads are very bad.
I believe every house it's built has impact fees, but it goes into a large pot.
So it doesn't just impact the area that is, okay. And one area I would like for us to make sure we focus on when updating our codes is the area about business startup. I got a phone call this week about someone trying to start a business in town and they were unable to, we were unable to help them because our codes were dated and they did not have the particular business that they were trying to open up on the codes. So they could not help them and they had to go to the state and not us. Thank you.
It's funny you bring up about the businesses. I'm actually gonna bring a group from Santa Fe College that actually help with small businesses and startups. That would be perfect for them, so. That would be really good for them to get with, uh, James Coats over at, uh, um, the Blunt Center in Gainesville. But if they just make a phone call, there's, there's a lot of resources that they offer to small businesses ready to start up. And if they want to reach out and, uh, get involved in High Springs and help out any small businesses that they can here, so. That'd be one resource for them and then we definitely need to get that stuff updated. I do not have anything.